Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Macon Biff County Commission Meeting. It's our regularly scheduled meeting. Today is Tuesday, August the 15th, and the time is now six o'clock. I'd like to welcome everyone here to City Hall. I'd like to officially call this meeting to order. We'll do like we do in every meeting, and that will be to have our prayer. The prayer tonight is led by Commissioner Raymond Wilder, and we'll be followed by the place of allegiance, and then we'll have our presentation. So at this time, those who can and will, please stand by your head for the prayer.
This day, we've come to you and just presented ourselves to you this evening. We thank you for the pre-commissioned meeting. We just ended it a few minutes ago. And we ask you, as we go into this commission meeting, dear Lord, for us to open our hearts and our minds to follow you and do all that we do within this meeting for county business, for our constituents, to glorify you. We just thank you for all this, and we just ask you, Lord, to be with us and be in our minds in all that we do for moving forward. Thank you.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Not aware of any announcements, but we do have a special presentation tonight. So at this time, I'd ask our county manager, Dr. Keith Moffett, to come forth with the presentation. And then, as he calls your name at some point in time, if you don't mind, you're gonna bring him down for a picture. Is that correct? Yes, sir.
Have the Assistant Director of our Recreation Department, Ahmad Burnett, join me and tell us a little bit about the team, the program, and then we have the coaches come up to recognize the athletes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, just a little bit about Bloomfield Youth Baseball. They were able to travel to Gulfport, Mississippi, a couple of weeks ago in mid-July, and compete against some of the best competition in the United States, I could say. And were able to come out victorious as the 2023 U-SSA Twelve-U World Series Champions. So that's something to be proud about, that we have homegrown young men that went and competed and to get the making name out there, that we are a competitive city. And they couldn't do it without the coaches that are here, so I'm gonna ask Adonis Hollishead to come up, the president of Bloomfield Youth Baseball. And just tell us a little bit about the competition and all that you all had to face.
How you doing? Good evening.
Good evening.
Basically, we've been going to the U-SSA Rake World Series since 2016. It's composed of Rake All-Stars that you pick at the end of the season for teams that played together throughout the season. It's competition from all over the United States. We've been to Gulfport, Mississippi, a few times. Last couple of years, we went to New Orleans. Basically, if you win, it's just like Little League, like they got regions and districts or whatever. But U-SSA, you win the sub-state, you go to the state. Win the state, you automatically qualify for the World Series. So we had like three or four teams that qualified, from six, you eight, you ten, you twelve, and fourteen, for the state. The twelve you won the state, our eight you won the state, so they automatically bid for the World Series. You also, there's another way to get in the World Series. What we like to do, I mean, if you pay automatically, you can go. But we'd rather win the state, go free. But, and we just like to take the kids, because it's something, a lot of these kids would never get out to see them in Macon, you know, get to see other things, you know, give them a good learning experience, see what's the competition about all over the United States. And fortunately, we seem to do pretty good. So like since 2016, we had several third place. This year, we had two teams in championship, our Twelve-U and our Fourteen-U. Actually, the Fourteen-U was winning at the time. They canceled the game because of the weather, but they gave the championship to the highest seed. We'll be back next year, though. But beginning of the All-Star season, I kinda knew this Twelve-U group was kinda special. And y'all probably think I'm lying, but I told the coaches that they were gonna win the World Series. So, and they did, they had a perfect postseason. They didn't lose in the sub-state, they didn't lose in the state, and they went undefeated in the World Series. It was thirty-two teams in the age group, like I said, just from all over the United States. So we represented Macon very well. Y'all get these boys in hand.
Congratulations.
First, I want to call the manager of this team, Tenacio Dimart. Coasis Poole. And we couldn't do it without the team, Sylvia Crawford. First up, we have Coasis Poole Jr. Gerard Turner. Jaden Jackson. Kyle Howard. Micah Clyde. Connor Webb. Rashad Williams. Jamari Crawford. Cedric Jackson III. Kaden Brown. Jaden Center. LaKiri O. Smith. And Jordan Wiggins.
And coaches, if y'all like to go ahead and leave, this'd be a good time to do that before we begin our meeting. Thank y'all for being here tonight. Thank you for all the work you do representing Macon Biff County in a positive way. We'll go ahead and move forward with our approval of the minutes from the August 1st, 2023 meeting. This time, entertain a motion for approval of the meeting. A motion by Commissioner Wilder, second by Mayor Protem Clark. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Oppose, nay. That motion carries and will be sent, I'm sorry, will be approved unanimously. We're gonna move on to the public comments on agenda items. We have one comment tonight. This is Attorney Brian Gerard from the Gerard Law Group. Thank you for being here tonight, and I'll send this to your client with you as well. This is in regard to what we refer to as the M&M Store on Montpelier Avenue. And this comes out of a hearing that was held after a revocation by this commission. So at this time, Attorney Gerard will hear from you for five minutes, sir.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the commission, thanks for hearing from me. Yes, I have Banu Parthap with me from the M&M Grocery Store. As you no doubt know, I represent the M&M. I would urge the commission not to go along with the county attorney's recommendation, which I think is forthcoming tonight, not to issue the alcohol license in this case. The reason, I would respectfully submit, you should not do so. I would point your attention first, your Code of Ordinances 4-36 are where the commission sets out the ground, the parameters that you seek to follow in alcohol licenses. But I would also direct your attention to the findings of fact by Special Master Joel Howell. Specifically, in paragraph three, he points out that Banu Parthap complied with the list of required improvements to the property. At five, he points out that neither Banu Parthap nor any of his employees have been charged with being involved in any alleged criminal activity. Six, the special master points out that Mr. Parthap did not have notice of all the alleged criminal incidents. At eight, he correctly points out that Superior Court permitted the location to open. And finally, at ten, that the location has been compliant with the Superior Court's order or orders with respect to opening. Now, I would also submit to you that the county attorney's recommendation is erroneous because at 4-407 of your Code of Ordinances, this commission's rules specifically say that the special master's findings shall be considered binding and final. The county attorney's office has not followed that directive. Specifically, the county attorney's office has not followed 4-407-K two or three. In the county attorney's recommendation, it has not cited to the special master's findings to support the county attorney's office recommendation to any of you. Specifically, it appears that the county attorney's office is dissatisfied with Special Master Joel Howell's findings and seeks to have you make your determination based on what the county attorney alleges and not what the special master has found. Specifically, I would direct you in that regard to the final recommendation on the application provided to each of you, as well as to me as counsel for M&M. And I would note that, under the opinion portion of that recommendation, at paragraph one, the allegation of the county attorney's office is that the special master failed to adequately address certain things. Well, again, per the commission's own rules, the special master's findings are considered binding and final. Additionally, the county attorney's office at paragraph two points to allegations that are directly contrary to the special master's findings. The county attorney at paragraph three inserts something that was not considered or certainly not ruled upon by the special master, and that is an allegation of some admission that Banu Parthap does not own the M&M. In fact, that's directly contrary to the earliest findings of the special master, that Banu Parthap is indeed the owner of the M&M. And your commissioners, sorry, I would submit to you that paragraphs four through nine of this recommendation from the county attorney's office are all directly contrary to your own rules because the county attorney's office wants you to consider their allegations as opposed to what the special master found in each of those paragraphs. I would submit, commissioners to all of you, one, that like all lawful business in Macon Biff County, the owners of the M&M likewise don't want to see crime in the neighborhood. However, to shut down lawful business on the basis of an inability to control crime, regardless of who that inability to control crime is attributed to, is not a good policy, and it is not the message that this commission would want to send to either existing businesses or potential businesses to Macon Biff County. So I thank you for your time. I would ask, well, I would also point out to you that there is zero evidence presented that the issue of an alcohol license at the M&M has contributed in any way to the allegations of criminal activity in the area. There's absolutely no evidence that's ever been presented, to my knowledge, and certainly nothing found by the special master, that says this commission not renewing my client's longstanding alcohol license would somehow contribute to the safety in the neighborhood. In fact, it appears simply to be an effort to make it that much more difficult for the M&M to stay open, even though the M&M is complying with the Superior Court's order. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Gerard, for those comments. At this time, we've got no old business, but we have an item of new business. That's the final recommendation or recommendation on behalf of the county by the senior county attorney. So at this time, we'll hear from Mr. McNeil. Attorney McNeil, I'd ask you, you can find your remarks to five minutes or less as well.
Of course. Great, yeah. Mayor and commissioners, I'm Senior Assistant County Attorney Michael McNeil, here to present the final recommendation on application that was submitted to Clerk Janice Ross on the matter of the application for license renewal at BJP Gas and Food Mart. The commission previously voted to recommend denying renewal in December of last year. The bases were that it had been operating pursuant to a conditional license issued in 2019, that the conditions opposed had not been sufficiently effective to render the store location safe for the conduct of alcohol beverage business, multiple instances of criminal conduct at the store, including the fact that the store had been declared by courts to be a public nuisance, the fact that Sheriff David Davis recommended that the alcohol license not be renewed, and then based on certain discretionary factors that were discussed at that commission meeting relating to the condition of the premises, the suitability of the premises and the owner for the conduct of alcoholic beverage business at that property. As Attorney Gerard mentioned, we did have a hearing on this matter. The facts that were cited in my final recommendation, Banu Parthap is the owner of M&M. That's specifically in finding of fact number one that Mr. Howell found. Says Banu Parthap is the owner of, he put BLP Gas and Food Mart, but that's in reference, we're talking about the same thing there. Mr. Parthap was put on specific notice of an ongoing duty to abate the dangerous conditions at M&M back in July 2019. The exact wording that Mr. Howell said, Banu Parthap was put on specific notice of the ongoing dangerous conditions, as well as his duty to abate those conditions at the premises of BJP Gas and Food Mart in July 2019, when he signed the consent order to accept the alcohol license with conditions for that store. I cited that he had failed to do so, such that all incidents alleged in the county's verified complaint in the nuisance abatement action are credited as actually having occurred on the premises. And that is cited in fact number six. He says, "All of the incidents in Exhibit A of the verified complaint appear to have actually occurred, appear to have occurred on the premises of BJP Gas and Food Mart, and the store was declared a public nuisance and closed temporarily as a matter of nuisance abatement by the Superior Court in September of '22," which is fact number seven in the findings of fact from Special Master Howell. So the findings that are cited, they're supported by the record, they're supported by the finding of fact. The issue as to the certificate of good standing of the ownership of, not M&M, of the premises on which M&M operates, that was not raised in the hearing because it wasn't a reason stated in this commission's denial recommendation in December. But it was something that Mr. Parthap admitted under oath during the hearing. And then each of the discretionary considerations are all independent grounds for denying the license. And so, just to recap very quickly, the 436, which is the statute that is cited, says that "In determining whether or not any license applied for here under shall be granted. In addition to all other provisions of this article, the following shall be considered in the public interest and welfare." And the factors that the commission cited back in December 20 of '22 were, one, the applicant's reputation, character, and mental and physical capacity to conduct business; two, whether or not the applicant has violated any law or regulation relating to any alcoholic beverage business for which he may have previously held a license or which he may have had an interest; three, any manner in which the applicant conducted the alcoholic beverage business under any prior license; seven, which is the suitability of the premises for the conduct of the unalcoholic beverage business, including its location, highway traffic problems, and the difficulty or absence thereof of policing by law enforcement agencies. And I would note that that has no bearing at all on the owner or the qualities of the business. It's purely a condition of the property. And then eight is the occurrence of violent crimes or gang activity within a hundred yards of the premises. And so, the commission recommended in December of '22 to deny renewal of this alcohol license on each of those grounds as independent basis to deny. The special master heard the evidence on that. They made findings that support exercise of this commission's discretion to deny on each of those independent grounds. And it is my recommendation that final denial be made as to the renewal application for the reasons stated in my submitted document. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Attorney McNeil. At this time, it was the pleasure of the commission. Mayor Protem Clark, I see your light on.
Yes, if at the proper time, I'd like to, as a representative of Montpelier Avenue and the neighborhood surrounding Montpelier, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation and deny.
Okay. We have a motion by Mayor Protem Clark. Is there a second? Second by, who's that? Commissioner Bronson? I have a motion and second by Commissioner Bronson. Any questions? Hear no questions, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion by Mayor Protem, please say aye. Oppose, nay. That motion carries eight to zero. Thank you very much, Attorney. Do whatever need to be done to follow up the next process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gerard, for being here today. Okay, now we're gonna move on to the rest of our agenda. The items A through K, we can do those all together if you'd like to. If you want me to pull out the millage rate, I'll be happy to do so. Okay. We're gonna pull out item K, which is the ordinance reducing the millage rate. So we'll do items A through J at this time. Items A through J, at this time, I will have a motion to approve the consent agenda as previously discussed in pre-commission and approve unanimously. So at this time, I entertain a motion for approval of items A through J. Motion by Commissioner Wilder, second by Commissioner Nguyen. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Oppose, nay. That motion carries. We're gonna move on to item K. Not sure if we can put that back on the screen, Mr. For. Item K is the ordinance reducing the millage rates to be levied by and assessed for the year 2023 upon the taxable property located in Macon Biff County Tax District. Earlier, we mentioned that that bill was sponsored by myself, Commissioner Nguyen, Commissioner Bronson, Commissioner Howell, Commissioner Wilder, Commissioner Clark, and also Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Lucas. My bad. All those co-sponsored as well. So as a reminder, I wanna look at the items on your screen, which is fiscal year 2021, which showed a millage rate of 20.33 mills. Fiscal year '22 was 19.09 after a reduction. Fiscal year '23 was 17.901. And also, this year, fiscal year 2024, the recommendation is to reduce the millage further to a 10.723 final millage rate. That would be a three-year reduction of 9.6 mills. That will be the amount that's listed on the county side that will go out in the tax bills for this year. So at this time, I heard, we get a motion and second. If you wanna do a roll call vote, we'll certainly do that. So Commissioner, we got a motion by Commissioner Howell, I'm sorry, Mr. Wilder. Commissioner Wilder, we have a second? Second by Mayor Protem Clark. And Ms. Lucas, did you have a question?
I just was gonna ask you to explain what the implication of this one, of this is. But you've already gone through some.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. So Commissioner Bronson, you asked for a roll call vote, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Nguyen, how do you vote? Commissioner Bronson, how do you vote? Commissioner Lucas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones, how do you vote? He said yes. Commissioner, Mayor Protem Clark, how do you vote? Commissioner Wilder, how do you vote? Mr. Howell, how do you vote? Mr. Watkins, how do you vote? Okay. Thank you. We have a unanimous vote by those in attendance, so it passes eight to zero tonight. So the new millage rate for Macon Biff County will be 10.723. This concludes our business for tonight. If there's no further business, that brings us before. We'll be back on September the 5th for our regular scheduled meeting, the day after, or the day or so after, the day after Labor Day. This meeting is here, I'm sorry. My bad. We got a couple of people on our agenda, my bad. That does conclude our meeting as far as the agenda items, but we do have three people. I saw, first one is the Honorable C. Jack Ellis. I don't see former Mayor Ellis here, who had come here earlier today to ask to speak. I'm not sure the item on there. And we have Mr. Wade Horton, and then Mr. Smithy Matthews. So Mr. Horton, if you don't mind, I'll let you not be the last person tonight, like you were last time. Appreciate you being here. It didn't have the item on the agenda that you wanted to speak about, but I suspect this has something to do with the Transit Authority. Okay. So you know the routine, and you've got a maximum of five minutes to speak. And you can be in now.
I don't mind being last.
Okay.
Sometimes you remember what the last person said more than other folks.
That's why I put you next to last tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. I just wanna pick up where I left off at last time. I informed you that the Transit Authority CEO has the ability to sign checks of up to $250,000 currently of taxpayers' money. And at the last meeting, Chairman, Chairman Tompkins indicated that they would be looking at making it at least $900,000. indicated that they would be looking at making it at least $900,000. He didn't give an amount, but I assume it was $900,000 because that is the amount that he had to get permission to sign a check for the three new electric buses they got, which came to about $900,000. Now, I'm not saying that there's corruption at Transit Authority, I wouldn't say that, but there is the potential for that. When one person has the ability to sign a check like it's their own money of taxpayers' money, that should not happen. I wouldn't even want that type of responsibility. And I, Mr. Mayor, I don't even think you have that ability to write a check for $250,000, not to mention adding it to be a $1 million. That is a real problem. And we have people who came to this commission running on fiscally being responsible, and this right here is a challenge that should be taken on because it's not fiscally responsible for one person, a CEO, to have this type of power in an organization. I was at the meeting, last transit meeting, and the chairman said that this is a small agency, and we do things a little differently. We have a CEO handles a lot of things. But we know that when you receive further money, they don't care if you're a small agency or a large agency. They have certain protocols that you need to adhere, adhere to in order for things to work the way that it is supposed to work. Now, about a couple of meetings ago, the Transit Authority changed banks. They went to First South Bank. About two or three, about three years ago, they were with SunTrust. They broke away and went to BBNT. And I wondered after they, that happened after the truest joint, when they, when they combined their services and became truest bank, what would happen? Well, they've changed banks again. Now, the problem that this is, to me, is that no other banks had the opportunity to bid on it. Many of you probably didn't even know they had changed banks. This is a serious problem because this is one person bringing all of this information, and no one questions it. The only time you hear a board member speak is when they make a motion and they second the motion. No questions are asked to make anything better or to inquire about, what is it exactly that they're doing? There's no questions about that. We have serious issues that need to be brought. And the reason I come before you is so that you would know what is going on, and you don't have to take my word for it. You can find out for yourself if I'm telling the truth or am I not telling the truth? But my goal is to come here and inform you of what is about to take place so that you can address it locally before someone else outside of the area have to address it. Because I think we can keep our own house without having to do that. Now, that, that is a real problem, I think, with, when you have bidding going on, or when you don't have bidding going on. I don't know, maybe it's some friend or some kickback in the midst. I don't know. But it doesn't look good. It looked like a lot is going on, and I think that is something that this mayor and commission should look into locally before it has to go outside of the area. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. And finally, our last person to speak tonight is Ms. Mitzi Matthews. Ms. Matthews, and I know she's aware, but this is a planning and zoning matter that this commission doesn't necessarily micromanage or have any vote typically, except for the budgetary time. But I know you had some issues there that you like to bring to the attention of this commission. So while we have five minutes to address this, if you don't mind speaking into that microphone, you may have to pull it down just a little bit because you're not quite as tall as the rest of them. We'll give you up to five minutes to speak and let the commission know this is not a time that we'll go back and forth or answer any questions tonight, but this is an opportunity that you have to let us know what's on your mind tonight.
I'll try real hard to be quicker than five minutes.
No problem.
I understand my commissioners, Mr. Howell, and I want to thank him for inviting me to come tonight. My situation involved a fence variance, which I understand is pretty common with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And of course, I'm devastated because of my variances, which I paid $630 for, were turned down. And my, I felt like my request was very viable because I'm being viciously harassed by a next-door neighbor who tried to acquire my property by adverse acquisition, by trespassing on my property with their, their RV. And so I put up a privacy fence, and then things got worse. And they began to, they had already been verbally assaulting me, and they began to do it even worse. So anyway, we've been to court, and it's just a mess, as you can imagine. But when I went to planning and zoning, I was absolutely flabbergasted at how I was treated. I was treated with disrespect, I was dismissed. And then the meeting, I was, I didn't expect much because of the way I'd been treated by the staff, but the board wasn't much better. What I saw was a board who was like throwing around their power. They, they didn't discuss anything. It was all about their opinions. And I don't want to talk about my case, I'm going to talk about another case that I heard that I was flabbergasted at. This was a situation with a building, I'm not sure where, you could figure it out, because by the way, I have, I had on a body cam, so I have the entire meeting on camera. But this was a situation with a building somewhere close to the downtown area or maybe down, you know, in the industrial area. And the people wanted to, the owners of the building wanted to put in a window that was bigger than the other windows. And one of the ladies on the board said, "Well, I just don't like the way that looks. I think it would be better if all the windows were the same size." Nobody asked any questions. Nobody asked, "Why did they want this window bigger? Was it because of the construction of it would be much simpler? Was it because the employees needed light?" Nobody asked any questions. A decision was made without any discussion or any information, just bam, this is my opinion? I think it would look better. So that's what they went with. The same happened with me. I spent a day compiling videos and information and sent, paid for the Dropbox, sent to the Dropbox. And when I got up to speak to the board, I asked them, "Did you all review the videos that I sent you of the harassment?" And every one of them said, "No. They're not bothering to think about the people of Bibb County. They're just throwing around their power and their opinions." And I hope that, I mean, if you guys can help me figure out where else to go with this, it's my understanding that planning and zoning is not accountable to anybody, and maybe that's the problem. They've forgotten about the people of Bibb County, and they're just all into themselves and their opinions. But I really hope you guys can do something about it or help me to go up the chain to do more about this. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight for those remarks, and certainly it's something that we'll follow up on that. So this does conclude our business tonight. There's no one else who would have asked to speak tonight or on the agenda. And I'm not aware of any other additional items that have come before us today. Our next meeting will be a night meeting on September the 5th, the day after Labor Day. So everyone keep safe. Until then, we'll see you the next time.